I'd like to call to this evening's meeting to order, would you all please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance. The ring of prayer. The pledge of allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How's your chair? It might happen. Okay. I will read the Dodge City Community College mission statement. Dodge City Community College will provide opportunities for high-quality learning and will enhance community and personal development in a student-centered environment. And we do invite remarks from the audience, so if anybody in attendance would like to address the board, they can at this time. Seeing that, I would also like to announce some visitors here today. One is Sheldon Birch from the Dodge City Daily Globe.
That's good.
It's you. Welcome.
Thank you.
And if I was understanding right, you wrote the article here with the West Plains CEO update?
Yes.
Okay. Very good article. Thank you. And then Vincent Marshall with the Globe as well. So Vincent, is he still here?
Yeah.
All right. You're behind Jake. And then Laurie Newshaver with the United Telephone and Nick Weath from RVI Inc. and United Telephone. So thank you all for being here today. I'll go on to approval of minutes, and we do have three sets of minutes to approve. So we'll all entertain a motion at the appropriate time.
Do you want to approve for three of them together or separately?
I can do them separate. I can do them together, just whoever would like to make the motion.
I agree with acceptance of that.
Okay. You'd like to approve all three minutes as presented.
Second.
Second discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay. Go into completion of the agenda. So you'll see on the revised agenda in front of you and not in your book, they have some additional items. That will be placed on today's agenda. And is there any revisions to the consent agenda?
I'd like to ask simple questions about, A, business services under 1A, approval of bills. I have some questions.
You had questions on business?
Business services, 1A.
Okay. 1A?
Yes.
Approval of bills?
Yes.
Okay. We will pull 1A out and for discussion. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve agendas as revised? So there's a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. Discussion. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay. Move on to action items, first off. Go. Never mind. I was getting into myself again. Trustees report. So we'll start with trustee Malone.
I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay. Florstein?
I just wanted to say that there are so many nice things happening at Dodge City Community College that thank you to Andrea and Steve that we've gotten the public informed about a lot of them. And I have a list, but I won't go through it all until you see it in the paper or hear it on the radio. But BC3 is the turned-on place in Dodge City, so we need to settle that down.
I do not have a report.
Okay. I know that I have a few things, but Dr. Nolte would like to address the trustees.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Harshberger. For you that went to the birthday party for Florstein Hampton, we had a good time. Had a really good time. But during that process, we were also, we also have a bench that was made by our welding department for her. It's going to be sitting at the Special Events Center. And on that bench, I hope you can see this. On that bench, we finally got our little plaque to put on it. For your years of service and dedication in service, Marvin and Florstein Hampton. And we're going to put that on there. We're going to put that plaque on there, so please give it a round. That was Cruz and, I'm just kidding. Maynus, can we have that? Can y'all do that for us, please? Thank you. The other thing I just kind of wanted to bring to your, to your knowledge a little bit is, I want to make sure, and thank you for the article about nursing. It's amazing when you pay people well, what happens with programs. And I'm real proud that our nursing program is doing as well as it's doing. And it's, and it's nice that we, we get along with our, with our hospital and other, other groups. And I think working with the city and the county and, and other groups and in the hospital as well as others have really, are really going to pay off for us. And I'm really happy to see that we're working with the hospital and working with other hospitals. But our nurses are well, well thought of, well respected, and are doing a great job. And so I want to see that, that continue. Along that same line, I want to make sure that, you know, we, we are very well informed about Title IX now. And so I want to make sure that, and Jacob and I are going to make sure that we have parity in athletics. I want to make sure that our, our women's coaches or female coaches or not really, our women's coaching teams are being paid as well as some of our men's team. Because I think that's important. I mean, I really, really do think in this day and age, I mean, it's, it's, it's very important. And I want to make sure that we work hard at parity and make sure that we work well. And I know a couple, I know Dan and others have kind of mentioned it to me. So we're going to work on that. And so you have my word on that. Jake and I have talked already about that. And so, you know, I know we're trying to work on races for others, but I do want to work on the parity for that also. So just FYI on that. And thank y'all, thank y'all for letting me be gone for a couple of weeks. And it was good. And I came home to a ceiling that was blown up. My water pen fell out. And so I've got some really good people working on it. So thank you. Service Masters over there now, and they're doing a good job. But thank you for all that you do, and we appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Okay. We did have a work session yesterday afternoon, and so thanks to those that could join us. And I hope it was productive for you. And so this is a chance, and they are open to the public, but gives us a chance to ask additional questions and get a little more information. So thank you all for attending, those that could.
And thank you for that. We've had staff just talking much about how wonderful that is to be able to, to talk some of those things out in visit with, with the board about certain issues and things. And so I really think they're very effective and very helpful, and I appreciate us doing that. So I have Dr. Presley.
I have nothing new. I look forward to the students being back. Stuff to tell everybody about that?
Coming up.
Get the college back to students.
That's right.
I'll let Dan speak on this a little bit too, but he and I attended our first curriculum meeting with the committee. And I can only say how proud I am of the quality of staff that we have here at the college and the knowledge level that they have and what they're going to bring to the students this next year. I'm delighted about it. It was a good conversation. It was fun to get to know them on a more open level than, okay, you're a trustee, you're not, you're just informal group visiting and finding out about their jobs and descriptions. These new hires, I am very impressed with. So you guys have done a nice job on keeping that high quality coming in.
I'd like to echo that statement. We had a very good meeting with the heads of the departments, and they, they were very impressive people. So we had a great meeting. They talked very well, and we had some good ideas going around. Appreciate the opportunity to meet with them.
Florstein?
We need to add one thing. Congratulations to Dr. Jeremy. He is now a fellow, which is a point of congratulations anyway. And also thank you for the responsibility or chairmanship of the Kansas State Board. Thank you. We're proud of him. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can we give him a hand?
Yeah.
When I grow up, I want to save lives like a superhero and show up when people needed me.
When I grow up, I want to be a police officer, and I want to protect people too.
No matter what it is you want to achieve in the future, your journey starts here.
When I grow up, when I grow up, when I grow up.
I don't know what I want to do when I grow up, but I know I want to go to college.
Dodge City Community College: Adventure awaits.
Okay. So we'll move on to other reports. Vice President Veda, Herman, turn it up.
Before we do the budget, we had this conversation yesterday at the work session, but because there were some that weren't able to attend it, I would just like to talk about the state aid funding, and then we'll move on to the budget. Dr. Nolte had asked me to attend in his place a COP meeting at, and over in Wichita. And I just want to, because I don't think we have spent enough time on explaining this to the board on how state aid funding is working. And I just, I'll briefly cover through this, but this might be something that a later work session, you'll want a more explanation on, and we'll try to revive that for you. Okay. We have post-secondary tiered technical state aid funding, and that is for each tier, whether it's a welding, nursing, nursing being our highest tier, that you reimburse from the state on. The non-tiered course credit hour grant, of course, is the one that we've had. The last one we had, I think, was back in 2008. And that is just based on credit hour funding. Now, that was the topic of conversation at this retreat, and after I get through this, I'll come back to that. But then we have Senate Bill 155 for vocational classes, which has been extremely rewarding for us because we bring in 360,000 new additional dollars from, from Senate Bill 155. That's where you allow a high school student to attend a vocational program for, without having to pay anything. And then the state refunds us back on the credit hour of that based on what that level of funding is. And it would be whatever, if it's, would be like a welding class, and a welding class is, say, $350 on the tiered level. And I have staff working on that, so I think it information, so you can take a look at how they have tiered that funding. I think that would be something you might be interested in seeing. But now, one, what they're talking about at the meeting was, what can we do about concurrent enrollment for academic classes? And the, what Linda Fund was working with the COPs about is maybe we could do another Senate Bill 156 where we do the same, have the same criteria for the academic hours of high school students. And that seemed to be very well received. And of course, it wouldn't go into effect till next year, but this would be, high school students wouldn't have to pay tuition or fees or anything. And then they would reimburse us at $183 a credit hour. So that would be additional revenues coming into us, which would be very exciting. Now, let's talk about the current formula. And the formula that we're under right now is weighted by in district and out district. The average reimbursement from the state is 183 per credit hour. In district is one-third from tuition, one-third from state, and one-third from local taxes. Now, out district is one-third from tuition, and we get two-thirds from state. So your out district, we are getting from the state double what we're getting for an in-district student. So like for an in-district, you're going to get 61 back from the state, and out-of-district, you get $122 back from the state. So it is weighted. So I thought you'd find that interesting. Also, right now...
Is that because the state, I'm sorry.
No. No, absolutely not.
But that is because the state doesn't think that the taxpayers in a certain district should pay for the out-of-district student.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's the, that's what's happening. That was when 345, we went, we went under the pay board, is that we used to get from out district, from the districts that it was coming from, we used to get $24 from them and then $24 from, from that county. And then we would get $24 from the state, which made 348, which was great. But when we went under and went under this formula, that all went away. But with this latest formula, it is weighted, and we are getting more from our out district students than from our in-district students.
Veda, did they give you any indication of the totals when the counties used to pay in, like it's what you were referring to?
Yes.
And now the state's giving it?
Yes.
I wonder how that can, do you have any idea?
Well, it would be like, it would be for $122, and when we were doing it before, we were getting 48. So it is comparable. I think we're getting more money now than we were before, because when we were under the regular 345, we wasn't, it wasn't being weighted at all. It was just credit hour for credit hour. And I know Terry is waiting for me to come back with an answer on where we were when we were under 345 and where we are today. So I will get those comparisons for you, so you can see how our state funding is leveled out. I'll go back to the, when we first went under pay board. Now, this sheet right here is what, that you have in front of you, is what they presented at the COP meeting. Now, what we have been working on or under, I suppose I should say, is that they just froze this, when we couldn't get completely funded, and we are $32 million short of funding the formula. So they just froze it. So now, the COPs, the presidents are saying, you know, there's no room for growth, it doesn't matter. Grow, it doesn't matter where they are, because you're frozen. You're frozen at an amount, and that's what you get funded on, regardless of how you grow, you decrease. And now the presidents are wanting to come out of this and talk about re-centering. What re-centering means, and this is what this chart is, is that we'll go off of the freeze, and then you're going to be paid exactly what you, what you, you have in enrollment. Now, what the problem is, is they have frozen us, and there is a gap in there that is, is kind of like a hold harness. But now, if that gap starts getting funded first, then you follow yours all the way across, follow Dodge City all the way across, and you're going to realize, if you look over here in the red and the black, and this is where the presidents aren't agreeing on, because there's going to be a lot of people are going to get hurt. And we're showing that over a four-year payout, we're going to lose $100,000 every year. So I didn't get the impression that that was a popular decision and that they're working on trying to get the $32,000 funded over the next four years. So I, I think we can anticipate that. This was not popular.
Okay. The $32 million?
Yes. But spread out over four years. So I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what was going on, and I appreciate the opportunity to attend that meeting. Now, let's talk, you bet.
On this re-centering. Can you explain why there are winners and why there are losers?
That is based on, okay, the guy from Neo Show, Brian, I think, Dr. Nolte is, is the president. If you follow across there, you will see that Neo Show, that gap, see, he's in, in the black, $669,000 that he's not getting funded, that he should be getting funded. He said that he has as many students in his vocational classes that he does athletics.
His welding classes?
Yes, his welding classes.
So that goes back to that Senate Bill 155?
Yes.
And if you look, look at the technical schools, you've got Flint Hill Tech, you've got Manhattan Tech, you've got Washburn Tech. All those schools are, you can see they're winners, because they, they are a technical school. And so 155 will work well for them.
What was the amount that we were going to receive in the vocational classes, through SB 155? $355,000?
Oh, how much did we receive? $360,000 this year.
And, and health, and nursing pays the most. Anything in healthcare pays the most.
400 and, I think it's 460, $460 a credit hour.
Nursing, nursing does. But anything in healthcare will pay much more than...
Yes. Yes. That's your highest paid tier. And it's all by tiers. So I, I really believe that this is the last year where it's going to be frozen, and I think we need to pay attention to where we need to start growing and how much it's going to affect us.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Now, let's talk about our budget. Okay. This, the first sheet is what you're going to be seeing in the paper we'll be publishing within a couple of days. And that's what you're going to see. The mill is, we are keeping the mill the same. No mill increase. Then, we went through the work session, but I just want to kind of briefly refresh your memory on that. So the first, our budget assumption is estimated assessed evaluation went up 5%, Increase in wind farm taxes, $20,000. We received $700,000 last year in wind farm taxes. No increase in health benefits again. We're, just what we had raised in tuition is going to be about $23,000. And of course, this is first year we've received increase in state aid of $71,145 because we've been frozen. And then the sale of the property for, from the city, we are going to receive a check for $270,000 post '72. But with this budget that I'm presenting to you, I think we can balance this budget. But that's not going to meet your HLC requirements. You're going to have to cut about $420,000 out of this budget, because in order to maintain our ratios, we're going to need to add two reserves, four to 500,000 dollars. Now, when I say ratio, I know, I think Dr. Presley had, had said, why, why have we never heard about this ratio? Well, the reason you've never heard about this ratio is because we haven't even been close to an issue. You have a ratio that talks about your cash and, well, there's four ratios, but the two we can control is debt and our cash reserves. Now, debt is going to pay off next year at $2 million, which is great. But we have got to get this budget so that we can cut out enough that we can carry four to 500,000. Now, our ratios, what did I do with that saying? I just gave it to you. Our ratios back in, oh, say, 2007 was 5.2. 2016 was .52. That's when we started getting in trouble. Then we were able to carry over, because of the helicopter income, we was able to carry over $600,000 in cash reserves. So that took us back to 1.70. Okay. That stream of revenues gone. And we're going to have to cut and be serious about these cuts, or we're going to end up on probation. So we talked yesterday about how we were going to make those cuts, and I know Terry, you had expressed concerns. And I had suggested that we make the cuts, that the administration makes the cuts, we bring them to you, and you approve those cuts. Gary had asked that we come up with a plan for him to take when they go to, for him and Dr. Nolte to take, to go to Chicago. And that is, I think, Gary, you said the 13th and 14th. So Dr. Circe is on vacation this week, so I haven't got to talk to him. But I am going to recommend to the board that we cut 450 to 500,000 from six different areas. And that will be the presidents, the president, workforce, the provost, the VP of finance, the VP of student affairs, and the VP of academics. And we're going to, all, I'm going to ask all those six areas to submit to me by August the 6th their recommendation for those cuts, so that Scott and I can put that into a form, to a, what am I trying to say? To a plan that you can take with you to Chicago to say, this is how we're going to make those cuts. Now, we will have that, we should be able to bring that to you by the September 15th to have a work session to present those cuts to you. So if, if you have any suggestion, does that sound like a plan that you want us to pursue? I guarantee you, we can, we can do this.
How much are you asking each of those?
$75,000 each. We have to.
Why don't we just cut to 25 positions that cost us $878,000 if we didn't need it?
That would be a question for the president. I think this is a more realistic...
But I mean, we did add 25 new positions over a five-year period. It cost us almost a billion dollars if you count benefits, right?
We can identify, I mean, we could, at the, at the work session... We can identify, I mean, we could, at the work session, and you had requested, we can bring you and show you your payroll, we can bring positions. This is just going to be our recommendation to you. I mean, and we'll discuss whatever you want to do.
If I understand this right, I mean, that the, we're going to have additional tax revenue of almost 500,000?
Yes.
Right? Plus the other deals that I calculated up to 876,000 that we're going to have in revenue that you, basically additional revenue that you've listed for next year. That means you had the increase in wind farm taxes, tuition increase, state aid increase in the property sale, and that amount, I figured up to about 876,000.
But you've lost your million dollars in flight revenue.
In flight, okay, but, all right, that's what I was going to say. Even with that 876,000 additional revenue, we're still sucking air, right?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. I can balance the budget, but I can't get you where you need to be with the HLC without the additional cuts.
Many schools are in the same boat, though.
Oh, yeah, of course. I don't mean that we're the only ones. But our debt is what we used to be when we were just looking at cash reserves, which our cash reserves are the same as they were 10 years ago. But what we've done is add to our debt, is throw us up. That's what's caused the ratio problem.
And you could have this by August 6th so they can take it with them to Chicago?
I will have this to them, August 6th is when I want input back to this. And then Scott and I'll take a look at it and we will formalize a report for Gary and Dr. Nolte to take with them to Chicago on how we're going to make our cuts. And a plan of monitoring and how our plan is going to be at the end of the year so that we can add by to the 400,000 to 500,000 to cash reserves after we've balanced the budget. That's how you're going to make it work. So that's all I have here.
Are we sending some of our suggestions for budget cuts to Gary?
I don't think that is our role at this point. I think we leave it up to the administration staff to present their ideas and then from there we will take those and add from there. I don't think it would be advisable right now to start with. I mean, that is their job, that is their role. They're the ones with the knowledge, that's in the institution. And we'll take their lead and then we'll look at it and see what we think. Any other questions or comments on Beta's report? Beta, do you have anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, one clarification I do want to bring out on her report is that we, the administration will continually monitor our progress on these cuts to make sure that we're adhering to them, like we said at the end of the year, to make sure that we're keeping pace with the cuts and so we start building those reserves. Maintain accountability. Okay, all right. Thank you for that report, Beta.
When I grow up, I want to save lives like a superhero and show up when people needed me.
When I grow up, I want to be a police officer and I want to protect people too.
No matter what it is you want to achieve in the future, your journey starts here.
When I grow up, when I grow up, when I grow up.
I don't know what I want to do when I grow up, but I know I want to go to college.
Dodge City Community College, adventure awaits.
Next up, Dean Osmus, his report on Carl Perkins' grant.
Yes, good evening, Chairman Harshberger, President Nolte, Board of Trustees. I got a few things here this evening. I know there's a lot to get to on the agenda, so I'll be as brief as possible, but yet try to give you a good overview of where we're at with these three programs. I'll start with Perkins. Now Perkins is considered or what's called a pass-through grant, meaning that it's a federal grant that is administered by the state, obviously in particular the state of Kansas. Whereas, for example, Title V is a direct grant. So like for Title V, we deal directly with the feds. All of our reporting, all of our drawdowns go directly through the Department of Education. Whereas Perkins, we do our reporting and all of our drawdowns to the, or from the state of Kansas. So I just wanted to make that distinction as an FYI. Now, the purpose of the Perkins funds, Perkins funds are geared directly towards improving quality and outcomes within technical education programs. So money is not allocated towards academic programs, if you will. That money is allocated and spent directly on technical education programs or what they call Perkins-approved programs. And so outcomes, as I said, it's for the purpose of improving quality and outcomes. Outcomes would include things such as increasing the number of associate of applied science graduates, increasing the number of cert As, cert Bs, cert Cs, increasing the number of transfers, workplace or workforce placement, so things of that nature. It's used, those funds are used directly for those purposes. Presently, our Perkins-approved programs include welding, electrical power technician, cosmetology, nursing/CNA, early childhood education, computer science/information technology, building construction technology, automotive, as well as diesel and ag production and farm and ranch management. So those are our Perkins programs. Those are the programs that we allocate monies to. Those are the programs that I have to report to the state on as it relates to outcomes, graduation, certificate achievement, things of that nature. Our allocation for this upcoming year, for the academic year of 1819, we were awarded $97,255. And that's a significant increase from last year, which we received $84,311. So it was nice to see that $13,000 increase. And while I'm thinking about it, I think I've noted it a little later on, but I've also mentioned this in a written report that I've given to the board. Our Perkins grant was on corrective action last year. We are no longer on corrective action. So that is excellent, excellent news. I'm very happy, proud to report that for lack of a better term. We've worked very diligently and very hard in getting that in order. I want to thank the business office, in particular Teresa Faber, she's been an excellent help to me. And there's been a lot of other people involved, but I'm happy to report that we're no longer on corrective action moving forward for the academic year 1819. And then to see the increase in monies was kind of icing on the cake, if you want to say it that way. Now Perkins funds can be allocated really in four particular areas to try to meet those goals that I've already talked about, to improve the quality and outcomes of programs. We're able to allocate and expend money on salaries, equipment, curriculum, and then professional development. Historically, and even the grant that I wrote this year, by and large, we put the majority of our money towards professional development and equipment. But it can be fluid, just depending on the year and the needs of the programs and kind of where we're at at that particular time. But this coming year, we've focused a lot on professional development as well as equipment in a variety of different areas. That would include, we're going to put some new computers in our computer lab over here. We've got some new equipment coming in for automotive, some new equipment coming in for welding. So it's kind of a plethora of different things that we're using to increase our quality and our outcomes. But as I said, it can change from year to year. I had a thought and now it's slipped my mind. It was something important and you'll have to forgive me. I didn't put it in my notes. It's really something I wanted to say and maybe I'll be able to come back to it.
We also got a nursing grant, didn't we?
Yeah, we got a nursing grant and I, well, you'll have to apologize for me. I'll put it in my next report. I can't remember the dollar amount, but that was good news as well. And that'll continue to increase, or allow us to increase our, sorry Jane, I'll hit you. To increase our services and our quality hovering in our nursing program. So as Dr. Nolte's already noted, there's a real buzz in the community right now about our nursing program and that's something we should all be very proud of, especially considering where we were at and how far they've come. So congratulations to them. They've done a tremendous job and something we should truly be proud of as, not only as a college, but as a community. So I'll speak to that in my next, in my next report. But like Perkins, Title V, which I'll speak about here in just a few minutes, those grants are a little bit, are quite a bit different as compared to RSVP or the Adult Learning Center grants, whereas these monies are to be spent internally directly towards education, where some of those other grants we have for RSVP and for the Adult Learning Center, those monies can be used for community services and community programs. So that's kind of the broad overview of Perkins. I did bring the grant with me. If you're wanting details as it relates to where I've allocated the monies to, what kind of professional development, faculty's planning on taking those kinds of things, I can get that information to you. But that's kind of a broad overview. It's specifically for technical education, improving upon those areas. And we do that through professional development, equipment, and then curriculum revisions when needed. And then, of course, the great news, that we're no longer on corrective action moving forward. Any questions about?
The professional development, does that mean continuing multiplication?
Yeah, that can be part, yeah, it can be included in it. That can be part of that.
Well, I can do it.
So the most recent, they've already, our cosmetology program just came back from some professional development in Las Vegas. And I promise you, they didn't just hang out on the strip. They were doing, they were out there doing what they need to do, sharpening up their skills, if you will, and their ability to deliver that instruction to improve upon the capacity of our students. So, yeah, so they'll be going through conferences throughout the year. We have to have all of our, the equipment piece is a little different than curriculum, more professional development. All of the equipment, I have to have that money accounted for, well, not only just encumbered, it has to be spent by December. So that's a little different, have to get all of those expenditures out of the way. But as far as like professional development, yeah, they'll be going to a variety of different things throughout the year. Nursing's got several things they go to, early childhood education has got several things they go to, welding's got one big event they go to each year, Cosmo's got the one big event they go to each year. So just, yeah, variety of different things. So, you know, without Perkins, especially when times are tight, it's a real asset. It allows us to do some things that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do equipment-wise or professional development-wise. So it's great that we have those funds and we're able to move forward with that grant. Any other questions? Okay, Title V, let me get a few notes here. So Title V I had, I've spoken about on a few different occasions. It's been a while since I brought anything forth. I think the last few times I've spoken about Title V, that was actually request for approval on some technology purchases. But Title V is a Department of Education grant that we received back in 2015. It's a five-year grant. We're actually in the third year of that five-year cycle. And we are just, right now presently, in the process of completing our year-to, year-end report. And as I talk about that, I need to visit with you, Dr. Nolte, tomorrow, but I'll catch you tomorrow about that. So we're just now finishing that out, moving into a couple of months into year three. And we entitled that grant Connecting to Success, and I'll get to that here in a few minutes. But as I already said, it's a Department of Education, $2.6 million grant. That grant, however, though, the Title V is specifically geared towards what's called Hispanic-serving institutions, or HSIs. In order to qualify as an HSI, your enrollment needs to be 25% or above. At the time we submitted the grant, our Hispanic enrollment was about 36%. And I think presently we're hovering somewhere around 40, 38% to 40. So each year, and I've been here now about 12 years, and each year that's continued to grow. So we plan on that continuing to move in that direction. Now Title V allows for five positions. I'm just going to read from my notes, actually. We have the Title V project manager, which I serve as a project manager. There's the activity director, which is Karen Gusterson. I think you guys have met Karen or possibly know of Karen. There's the advising specialist, the instructional design specialist, and the virtual systems specialist. And our virtual systems specialist is Skylar Callahan. So those are the five positions that have been written into the grant that serve as the means, if you will, of meeting all of our outcomes within that grant. And I would like to say, I put, I actually made a note of it at the end of this grant, or at the end of my notes here, but this grant has truly been a campus-wide initiative. There's been a lot of excellent teamwork with the things that we've done, the things we've implemented, everything from faculty and staff. And without going name by name, I appreciate everything that all of those individuals have invested in this initiative. But I particularly do want to thank Dr. Howard. She's not technically part of the five positions, but she's a de facto sixth employee of Title V. She's been a real help and a real guidance in the academic areas and the revision of our curriculum, which I'll visit a little bit about here in just a few moments. But I wanted to give her a special thanks for all the work that she's helped us with as we move forward on this grant. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, so the goals for the grant were retention, perseverance, completion, and transfer. Those are the four goals that we wrote into the grant. That was the reason why we applied for those Title V monies, was to improve upon our retention, our persistence, our completion, and our transfer. Now, to achieve or to obtain those four goals, the grant really has three focus areas, three guiding principles, if you will, to help us achieve those four areas. And those guiding principles are in the areas of curricular revision, technology, and support services. And in the third year thus far, we've really been focused on the curricular revision as well as the implementation of technology. We're just now moving into the support services areas, which includes serving as a support for transfer counseling and career counseling. So that's something we're trying to get off the ground and implement is some career counseling possibilities. And there'll be more information to come on that as we move forward. As I said, this is a five-year grant. Those are year-three outcomes, so we're just kind of beginning on that. But the other areas, as it relates to technology and curricular revision, I've noted a few things here, so let me highlight a few things. So for the curricular revision, when we wrote the grant, we identified 31 high-risk courses. Now, what I mean by high-risk courses are courses where they may be struggling with retention or the pass rates aren't as high, if you will. And those would be areas like our sciences, our math, some of the more academically challenging courses. So we focused in on some of the 31 high-risk courses, which include those basic skill courses that I just noted, as it relates to science and math. And then we also focused in on ESL. And to this point, we have done a curricular revision in nine different classes and we've got 11 on the docket. And then we'll have 11 more as we move throughout the last couple of years of the grant. So there's been a lot of work done in those areas. Faculty has been tremendous as it relates to those classes we've been working with, with the faculty members we've been working with, of course, Dr. Howard. So we've seen some really good things happen there in those courses. And then in addition to that is the technology. And I'm just kind of giving the overview because there's a lot that's gone in, obviously, to the revision of those courses. I'm just giving you the overview here. And then the technology, because more times than not, when I come before you, I'm asking you to approve an expenditure for technology. So some of the things we've been able to implement here on campus due to this grant, if you've never been over to our, the math annex, where we have our two, well, it's one math lab, but it's split into two rooms. Through Title V funds, we were able to do some curricular revision with our developmental education math courses and put them in what's considered or called an Emporium model. And that is... that is web-based, computer-based math instruction. Now, there is a coordinator there, there is a faculty member there, but this gives students opportunity to, to move that, move through that curriculum kind of at their own pace, if you will, or it serves a purpose of kind of meeting them where they're at, not trying to force them where we would like them to be, if that makes sense. Is that a fair way to kind of, kind of say it? So we were able to put 48 different stations in there, computer stations. We were able to remodel that space, and that was all through Title V funds, obviously in conjunction with math faculty. So it was, that was a tremendous effort, team effort, and it was wonderful that we were able to, to implement, implement those changes. Also multimedia stations. So we had identified 24 different classrooms where we wanted to update media, multimedia, to give, obviously, instructors the ability to go in and to enhance their delivery of instruction through using technology. So we've got identified 24 different classrooms with new multimedia stations, and we're pretty close to having all of those completed. And then the other thing we were able to do as it relates to technology-wise, and there's been some other things we, we've actually done, these are just the highlighted areas. Also over in our Humanities Building, I don't know if you've been over there, we were able to construct a new Humanities Lab over there. And I think that one had 30 stations, and so that's obviously utilized my English faculty, and it's such a great, great space, and gives them ability to deliver instruction in a way that they possibly couldn't have done before. So we were able to implement that through Title V funds as well. And once again, English faculty was great through that whole, whole process. So that's kind of a overview of RSVP. RSVP. Title V. A little bit about what Title V is, how much money we receive, and how we've allocated and used those funds, and so still moving forward on that over the next couple of, couple of years.
You have the Director of RSVP here, don't you?
Yeah, I brought the expert on RSVP here to back me up, so. Any questions?
Do you have one of the five positions open? I, I read that in the newspaper on Saturdays when you put, when the college puts in the tokens, it sounded like from the title they were looking for would be somebody in, in this Title V group.
Yeah, my, my actual title is the Dean of Workforce Development and Title V Program Manager. That is so long that just Dean of Workforce Development.
Is there a position open?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
A position open?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, the Advising Specialist. We're seeking approval for that position tonight. And we've been looking to fill the Advising Specialist as well as the Design, Instructional Design Specialist now for some, sometime. So we're still looking.
That's the instructional design that has been advertised for several weeks.
Yes, and we're, we're still looking. So if anybody knows of an Instructional Design Specialist with a master's degree in curriculum or any, please send them my way. Kathy, if you know of anybody in this whole district that's retired, send them my way. We've been trying to fill that position.
And that's grant-funded.
For long, and it's grant-funded, yeah, absolutely.
That's the one I keep wondering.
Yeah, that, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's okay. I was just wondering where you were going to find them. Every time I see that in there, I think.
We did actually offer an individual that position, and a couple of days before they were due on campus, they called me and said, "We're not coming."
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Now, your grant, you had to specify some goals.
Yeah.
And how, you want to touch on that?
Yeah, so it was the, what, in my, in my next report, I will send out the exact goals and how we met those goals. Because in our year-end report, we met all of our outcomes and goals for this past, past year. So excellent question, Chairman Harshberger, and I will put that in my, my written report, what those goal. It ties back to the retention, excuse me, to the persistence and all those kinds of things. But I'll spell out for you guys what exactly what those goals were and how we were able to achieve those, that through the technology and all of those different kinds of things. Thank you. Excellent. Any, anything else? Okay, so for RSVP, I was actually planning on cheating, because Lisa had come not long ago and gave a nice overview of the program. So I was just kind of, kind of leave it open if anybody had any questions, and if so, I was going to direct it to the expert. So are there any questions about RSVP at all and the services? And she's doing a wonderful job. What's it been now, two, two months, give or take? So moving forward on those services, and things are going, going well. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Dean.
When I grow up, I want to save lives, like a superhero, and show up when people needed me.
When I grow up, I want to be a police officer, and I want to protect people, too.
No matter what it is you want to achieve in the future, your journey starts here.
When I grow up, when I grow up, when I grow up, I don't know what I want to do when I grow up, but I know I want to go to college.
Dodge City Community College: Adventure awaits.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's a related issue that needs to make them tell us something off here about GPAs for the athletics that's happened because of some of these grants.
Jake, maybe come up?
Yes, sir. I, I think as you guys saw in the, in my board report to you, one of the big things that happened this year, our men's indoor and outdoor track teams were both named NJCA National Academic Champions this year, which I think is a huge, huge compliment to Coach Ballard and Coach Smith and what they do with the program, as well as the cooperation that we get from our, our faculty and our support systems. In addition to both of those teams winning the NJCA National Championship, the men's golf team and the men's soccer team were also both top five in the nation in NJCA. And then what's not in your board report that we actually got, because we didn't get until late Thursday evening, is the Golf Coaches Association also has a organization that they call 18 Verties, and our men's golf team was named the 18 Verties National Academic Champion of the Year this year as well. And so I think that, I, I've got to give a lot of, a lot of props to our coaches for what they do academically, what they, what they really try to push with our student athletes. And I think that it definitely paid off this year as you, as you look at some of the achievement in teams. And in order to be even nominated for the NJCA Academic Team of the Year, you have to have at least a 3.0. And we nominated 11 teams this year for that award. So I think that was a, a huge, huge success for, for our kids academically. And, and a lot of that, like, like you said, a lot of that wouldn't be possible without some of the, the math labs and the, the other labs that we've put in around campus to help all of our students, but it's definitely been a benefit for our student athletes as well, so.
It carried faculty.
Yes, absolutely. Faculty, you don't get any of this done without faculty. So I think that's very important as well.
Jacob, let me give you a hand.
Thank you.
This is your first year, right?
Yes.
Okay, so Ryan, you're finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
We move on to Board Action Items, and first up is the discussion on the easement.
I have Larry Neeshafer here from United Wireless, and Nick here is from the engineering firm, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes. And they will explain in better detail than what I put in the board packet of how things came about and, and what we're trying to do here.
Larry asked me to bring this to you guys, because you guys all seen the easement. It's a bunch of land descriptions and property descriptions. This is an actual drawing of the area that we ended up on your guys' property, 842 feet, and we are approximately out of the city right-of-way by 11 foot. What happened is the city told us that we had 23 and a half foot behind the curb for the right-of-way, because we like to place the cable inside a right-of-way well. Then they come back and said after we placed it, that they only have 11 foot behind the curb. So we ended up on your guys' property about 10 to 11 foot for that 842 feet, and approximate depth is 48 inches deep, is where we placed the conduit, so. Is there any other questions?
That it's already in place?
It's already in place, yeah. Because we, like I said, we thought we were inside of the city right-ofways.
It's right in front.
Yes, right in front.
Can y'all give us $490,000?
Yeah, so.
Was that a yes?
No, I wish I could.
Just kidding.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so the need for a private easement on this, is there going to be anything like construction easement?
Um, it's already placed, so there really, there's not going to be anything else, other than maybe pulling an extra cable in, the spare conduit, but it won't, there'll be no more digging on the property, so. The conduit's ready in place. We have a handhole out in front by the sign there, and it's actually in the city right-of-way. And then the next handhole is up on Highway 50's right-of-way. So we're just, it's a, it's basically a pull point, we just, we'd have to pull across the, the school's property, the college's property.
The only thing that could possibly be a problem with these constructed easements at this point, we're not.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the only thing there, you know, just having an easement to have it there. I'm sure United would not have an issue if something comes up. You guys are doing some construction there to move things or to fix things? Yeah. A fence, well, we're 11-foot in on the property, so we're not right on the city's property and your guys' property, we're 11-foot into your guys' property. So a fence wouldn't be an issue unless you're having an offset 11-foot, which I don't think you would, so.
Okay.
I mean, I could take any concerns or anything, you know, back to United and discuss it with him, or.
Okay, so as far as the, the information presented to us, the cable would be like five feet below the ground, but you say it's 48?
It's 48 inches, yeah.
Okay. And then can we grant this easement, but not have it, or have it such that if it impairs our ability in the future, that we could ask them to move it?
Well, the way, the way the easement reads right now is that you have to just allow them to be able to maintain it. You can't put any improvements, buildings, anything on top of the easement without the written consent at that point. That's how it reads at present.
That would be standard for a typical easement?
It's a typical easement for cable placement, is what we read it, you know, wrote it up as, if it needs to be adjusted, or we can probably do something, work that out with no issue, I'm sure.
But it is understood to be forever, right?
It's forever.
Okay.
Would this expand, because it goes underneath the driveway coming into the campus as it is anyways, correct?
Yes, it is under the driveway, yes.
So if any expansion of that drive, or if we did anything different, would that, I mean, that in and of itself, would that affect our?
It's, no, I mean, United's not going to hold you, if you guys are wanting to do things and putting other driveways and stuff in there, they're not going to raise their arms and say, "No, we have an easement, you can't do that." They just ask that, you know, "We have the opportunity to locate it, make sure the depths are good, and discuss it with you guys if there's any issues, then we'd have to adjust or move the cable." So they're, they're asking to work with you guys on it, and we just, we have to do this legality stuff to make sure everything is good, so.
Can we make the appropriate adjustments to the standard easement to memorialize our intent that our hands won't be tied in the future?
Basically remove the consent to where it would be if we want to do that, that they would have to adjust it.
Could we come up with some verbiage that would be acceptable?
I'm sure probably won't be an issue, guys. Like I said, this was just an accidental placement, and, and we just want to get things going. It's very costly for us to redo that, so.
Understood.
And we don't have any plans right now, but.
Sure, you can have some plans.
None of us would be here in the future when they do have those plans.
We, we don't want to tie the hands of our.
Of our future trustees.
Sure, sure, I agree 100%.
I'd like the company to.
Glenn, did you say you had a recommendation?
No, I, I just was pointing out that what this, what this document provides right now, you know, what Mr. Harshberger was saying is, could we modify that where it would require mutual consent? If, if the college decided to construct something there, then they'd have to adjust it.
Yeah, and I'm sure that won't be an issue. I'll talk to Kevin and those guys about it tomorrow, so. We can make adjustments, Glenn, whatever, you know, you work with Larry and talk with Larry and stuff. We can come back with any of that stuff and, and have United look at it and make sure they're happy with that and okay with that, so.
We can do that, okay.
There's very little likelihood that you would ever have to get into that again.
No, no, very, very, very minimal likelihood we'll have to get into it. Only, the only way is if somebody would hit it. It's a back out there on the private, it shouldn't be an issue. Fiber is easily locatable, and it is placed inside of a conduit, it's not direct buried. So it is in a conduit, which is a protective against the cable getting damaged, too, so. Like I said, we have a pull point right at the south side of the driveway and then one on the highway, you know, so we got pull points right there, which is not an issue for us, so.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. So on this item, we want to wait for action pending, seeing the final verbiage in the, in the.
I would prefer that, so.
Okay.
Coming back in a couple of weeks.
Okay, all right. So we'll, we'll look for your, your.
Changes.
Changes. Okay.
Do we need a motion to table that? A commutation or disamendment?
It is an action item, so you may want to table it until next meeting.
So I move to table that until coming back with the recommendations.
Second.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, okay. Okay, next up, Item B, Board Policy 515 on Faculty Qualifications.
Good evening. This is our Faculty Qualifications Policy presented to you for its second reading. I do apologize for the typo under current considerations, that should say second reading. Dr. Cersei was here last month to present this policy with me to you for the first reading. He's out of town today, some family obligations. So we respectfully recommend that the, that you approve and adopt Policy Number 515. We'd like to take this with us to Chicago when we visit our accrediting agency for their recommendation. Are there any questions?
I move approval.
Do you have a second? Second? Dr. Presley, discussion?
I have a statement, Mr. Chairman, that I would like to make. Despite the recognized challenges of competing in the marketplace, I have concerns about this policy. Why do we not value our tech faculty as highly as our academic faculty? Why have we lowered the standards for them as if they can't meet the high standards of other faculty? Faculty is faculty, enabling students to earn degrees that are fully accredited. Even assistant coaches are required to hold a bachelor's degree. We should not demote the tech faculty. We are an educational institution. We should be promoting high standards of preparation and accountability. Our goal should be to make DC3 above average. And the consideration might be, it will be the president's option to place faculty lacking adequate credentials, if there is a signed contract for a plan, to attain them in a reasonable time. We will adopt the goal of making DC3 above average.
Okay, any other?
Chairman, I will be voting no on this.
You what now?
I will be voting no on this one.
I'm taking a vote. Have him take a vote.
Following up on what Forrest Jean said, I think from a different tact, I'm concerned about the fact that the, we are in a geographical location that we are, and it's, I think we're lucky to have the technical instructors that we do have, and I fear of any type of mandatory type of requirement for education. And I would like to, I would vote against it unless it states that the failure to meet the educational requirement shall not be a prevailing factor, or the prevailing factor in whether or not the faculty member should be terminated. I think there are much greater considerations to be taken into consideration, other things to, and the obtaining of an educational BS degree to climb a pole or teach someone how to do it or a weld, I think would be putting our vocational training at jeopardy.
It seems to me that in the second paragraph, if we added and/or a combination of education, certification, training, and tested experience, if we added certification there, we could do away with that whole commercial pilot thing, couldn't we? Because isn't that just about having aviation certification for flight, for instruments?
As I recall, this was addressed in our last month's meeting. There are federally recognized qualifications for flight. And in addressing trustee Malone's concern, I would draw your attention to the second page, the final paragraph on the second page of the policy, where it reads, "When due diligence hasn't attracted the faculty members who are directly qualified, exceptions to the policy can be made. When there's documented support of educational training and/or experiential equivalencies as prepared by the appropriate academic officer presented by the president to the board for board approval."
Would you read your segment again? I want to make sure that I understand.
What, what are you in opposition to?
The fact that we are allowing tech faculty who are faculty not to meet the standards of academics.
I thought we had, I thought they were supposed to be on plan.
Right here. Right here.
But this is very, very indiscriminate. It's not very...
The faculty member should have completed a minimum of eighteen graduate hours in the discipline.
And you went shall.
Should have a bachelor's degree. The second paragraph, in the field or a combination of education, okay.
My point is those people need to be able to be high-class citizens just like everybody else, because they've been through that educational rigor. And I feel like we're doing them a disservice by not stating they need, they really need this. They really need to meet the same standards as academics.
Forrest Jean, that's what this policy is doing. This is a policy for minimal qualifications for faculty, so that they do meet the standards that HLC said that we need to have.
Well, I felt that it wasn't definite enough.
Not definite enough?
Yeah. And if we would say that the president, in nature, but only if this candidate agrees to follow through with the requirement.
We'll put them on a plan, and that's what we're, that's what we're doing with all the faculty. We're putting all the faculty on a plan. And the plan is not that hard to deal with. It's, I think it's like nine hours a semester, nine hours a year.
Nine hours in academic years, so that would include a fall, spring, and summer session during nine hours, or one course.
But that's only like one class per semester.
Per semester.
Nothing. I just, because I'm a little overly focused, I guess, the faculty would have the option of taking three courses in the summer if they chose, as long as they complete nine credit hours a semester successfully. And so we're trying to give them as many options we can, as we can, in light of their instructional load and their other obligations.
Why wouldn't we make the same requirements for the aviation program then?
It's a terminal degree. It's a terminal degree. It doesn't continue on.
It's what?
It's a terminal degree, doesn't continue on.
Okay.
And then where we're providing an associate's degree, that's a non-terminal. And so to meet standards, it has, people have to pass those, you know, qualifications so that those can move on to the next degree above, whereas the flight program is not. It's just, it's a terminal degree, that's it, stops there.
And you, you did hear, I know, I think they met with you all, HLC, they, they would have not even hired anybody without a degree. So, we're trying to make some accommodations for those that have, and then we'll be very strict about after that. You know, now we may have someone that we need to hire, but we'll put them on, we'll always put them on a plan. Always put them on, but we'll let you guys be aware of that.
And those now presently not meeting these have been given the option to go on a plan?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
But if they choose not to?
That's their, that's their, that's their prerogative.
Sooner or later, they're going to be terminated.
And so, what is the answer to that?
Well, if they don't, if they don't follow the process, which is HLC, we have to, we have to terminate. And that's not, that's not fun for anybody.
Well, why would HLC write this policy this way if they weren't going to follow through on it?
If they what?
If they weren't going to follow through on it. Why would they write their policy to say and/or a combination of education, training, and tested experience? You can have either a degree according to HLC or a combination of education, training, and tested experience. Why would HLC write a policy in this manner if they weren't going to follow through on the policy?
And my understanding of HLC is they do offer guidelines, and they are rather strict with guidelines, but these guidelines are also in, in alignment with our negotiated agreement, which does require that faculty and workforce have a bachelor's.
I think that's an important point. I think the, the second paragraph there is, I don't think it's, I don't know if it's lifted from the negotiation, negotiated agreement, but it's very similar to what faculty's agreed to. And that's been in the negotiated agreement for years, many years.
Terry, would you explain again, I couldn't quite hear you, about the difference between the aviation?
The aviation is a certificate. So that's a certificate.
Certificate.
So that's a terminal degree. They can't take that and go on to another level of higher education. And so if, like in our, our technical fields, if we were just to put out a certificate, then, then, and not an associate's degree, then that's, that certificate would be the terminal, and we wouldn't have to have these requirements.
Right, so the difference is in the type of degree or certificate being awarded?
Yes, yes, yes. That way, that way, there's continuity amongst educational enterprises, that they know that you have the background and it's credited, and it can move on to the next.
So, according to the negotiated agreement, though, a bachelor's degree has been required at this institution for a number of years, is that what we're saying? Yeah, we've been hiring people?
We're saying that the contract says that if you come in without a bachelor's degree, that you'll be on a program to get a bachelor's degree.
In the negotiated agreement.
Right.
So the institution has been called for hiring people that are not qualified?
Or not insisting that they...
Or not get them on a plan.
They're qualified.
Or get them on a plan.
They're qualified to teach, but just not, they don't have a degree.
Right. They've got to be on a plan.
That doesn't mean they can't teach.
Well, they don't meet qualifications, so we need to get them qualified. And so this is one of the items that HLC criticizes on. There's three of them. One was finances, and this is it. And they were insisted upon a minimum qualification policy, and most of this is taken from their guidelines. So, like what they had brought up before, you know, when you go to HLC, we need to have, and they told us all at our exit meeting.
They did.
You will have a minimum qualification policy, and so...
With the discussion, does this help the concerns that you have?
I think if the word should or shall, I could have...
I think that's in, in there to give you some, some wiggle room, but like in the last paragraph, you know, there are some exceptions that could be had by the president presenting that to the board.
Second paragraph, second line, second from the last word is should. Should hold a bachelor's degree in the field. And we could do formal language if it shall.
We discussed that with HLC, and the three of them said, if I recall right, it said should be shall, they will have that. And that one individual in particular, the lead, we'll say reviewer, said, "I would not hire, hire anybody without..."
I heard that also, in my presence.
And so he's the one that we're going to be visiting with in a couple of weeks, and he's going to be insisting upon that.
I understand.
And so one thing we do not do is try to butt heads with our auditor.
My fear is that perhaps the students are the ones that are getting lost in this. What if we have just the best diesel mechanic instructor in the world, and that person, you know, is at an age or whatever that isn't in position to do this? Who are we hurting? If, if we say that's, you know, if you don't have that degree, you're out of here.
You put them on a plan.
Well, yes, you put them on a plan, and, and that's what I would like to say, but the non-completion of the plan is, cannot be the prevailing factor as to why you would get terminated. And I don't, I mean, I agree with the plan.
Why would you not, I mean, we're an educational institution. Why in the world would you not want to be on a plan? Why would you not want to get more education if you're an educator?
You know, I mean, I just know that, you know, that people that do these types of skills and things like that, that they may not be as interested in academics as you and you are.
Then they shouldn't teach for college.
I'm kidding.
Yeah, they shouldn't teach for college.
Well, maybe they're, like I say, who are we forgetting? I mean, maybe they're the best. And so we say, but, but you shouldn't teach here because you don't have this certificate. And that's all I'm saying is if you have, I'm afraid that this type of thing, without putting in other protections or more discretion, that you may come up hurting your own community and your own students. That's all I'm saying. I agree totally with the fact that the concept and the goals that they should be, attempted be achieved. I doubt that at all. I'd like to see, I'm just saying that we don't live in, we don't even live in Wichita.
With all due respect, if you do hear of one of our faculty, faculty who feels unable to meet these requirements, Dean Osmus and I would appreciate talking with the faculty. We are exploring options for leave and for sabbaticals. We are encouraging the faculty to use the employee tuition benefit as well as their professional development funds. And as you've heard from Dean Osmus, there are additional professional development funds that are available through Perkins. Whether or not those might apply, we'd be interested in exploring that.
And I can't wait for y'all to meet the, our new employees that we've just hired. Unbelievable amount, and, you know, I've had this same argument, because I, most of the schools I work for, and, and it's amazing, and I always hear, "Well, we can't get good employees or we can't get good people." They have gone out above and beyond their call of duty and gotten some very good employees for this year and for other years, too. And so I do think we can, I think we're a great school. I think we can attract. I think we have great things going on here. I think you, look at our, look at our nursing program. I mean, people want to be in our nursing, I mean, we already hired a nurse, we had the application out of two days and already have another, a person that took that job. So, we, we are good. We are very, very good.
And you did that by raising standards.
Raising standards.
And then Terry, to, to your point, you know, so you look at public impression and you say to your students, "Well, welcome to Dot City Community College where our instructors are not qualified." Is that the impression you want to send to them?
It's not right, though. That's saying that they're not qualified is basically saying that they don't know how to teach. And you don't have to have a piece of paper hanging up on your wall inside a frame to make you a good teacher.
Dan, you're wrong. HLC, HLC, who is our accrediting agency, says that they're not qualified. Not us, not anybody else, but the people that are going to revoke our accreditation say they're not qualified.
This is HLC's policy.
That is enough said.
This is HLC's written policy right here. We didn't write this. This is theirs, and it says...
They're the ones saying who is qualified and who is not. That's who's saying it. And they're saying we have unqualified teachers here.
You have one person that came out here and got a fur on their saddle, and, and he's even going against the written policy of HLC. I stated what he stated.
There was three.
I only heard the one.
Three.
That he wouldn't hire anybody that didn't have a bachelor's.
They did not dissent.
It'd be like saying, you've got great public school teachers who can teach extremely well with a bachelor's degree. What if you went to all of them and said, "We think you need a master's degree." Well, how's that going to make me a better teacher? How's it going to make the diesel mechanic, Terry was referring to, a better diesel mechanic instructor to have that piece of paper hanging on, on the wall? It is not going to improve his ability as a teacher one iota, not one iota.
That's, that's not the point.
This is, this is the darnedest thing. We're an institution of higher education, and we're opposed to higher education. Amazing.
Can you repeat what you said a while ago about the word shall and should? Was there a discussion about using the word shall?
I take that as a giving a little bit of wiggle room, and especially if you look back in the last paragraph where it does say there's some exceptions that could be to the president upon written approval from the trustees, correct?
This is the wiggle room.
And so, and I'm trying to remember back to the discussion we had with the HLC reviewers on that, that selection of that, that verbiage. And some of you might recall his comments or their comments better than I. But that was in the policy.
It says...
Were you finished, Terry?
Huh?
Were you finished?
Yes, I am.
Jane, you've mentioned sabbaticals. Explain how that would work in a, like, say, a mechanic situation.
We do actually have one faculty from workforce who's asked about the possibility of taking a sabbatical. We want to be very clear with that person about the difference between a sabbatical or leave, taking a leave of absence versus a sabbatical. Sabbatical does have an obligation of employment after the sabbatical is ended, whereas a leave wouldn't. And depending on that educational plan that the person is on, you know, he may find it attractive to, to pursue another occupation. I would support that. Again, we're an educational institution, so if this individual is teaching classes for us and taking classes that we're asking them to take to meet our qualifications policy, then it may be that they find themselves prepared for a career move. To me, that's what we're about. We not only are teaching our students, but we should be supporting the, the life form learning within all of our employees and staff. And as I understand it, having had aunts and uncles who taught in public schools, both elementary, middle, and I guess that's three, secondary, there are obligations for public educators to, to continue their learning through continuing ed, through professional development opportunities. I'm not sure why we're out of line in asking that of our faculty, both workforce and academic.
But a sabbatical, actually, the person is paid.
That's true.
That's a good idea, especially for some older people that may have been doing this a long time.
I appreciate your support on that.
Well, once again, I think that piece of paper doesn't make you any better instructor. You know, if a person can teach diesel mechanics, when I take my diesel in for work, I don't say, "See your degree, is it on the wall?" Or my electrician comes over, "Is it on the wall?" You're saying somebody can't do the job because they don't have a, a piece of paper hung up on a wall. I'm saying people can, you're, you're trying to, to relate the academic side of our college with the workforce side of our college, and those two things are separate things, they're not the same thing.
Is the diesel mechanic a cert, certificate?
Sure.
It says a certificate.
Sure.
We're doing something more than a certificate. We're putting out an associate's degree, which means something. It's not a certificate. It's not a terminal degree, like the airplane. So you are, you have to have continuity amongst your institutions of higher education so they know that people coming to them, if they come to them, have those basic background skills that they can continue on at the next level. That's why you have this certification. And that's why we, and HLC wants to make sure that the teachers you have pass these minimum requirements.
But a master mechanic doesn't have a degree.
But we're talking about.
It's a different deal.
I'm talking about somebody being able to do the job.
I mean, the difference is that.
Talking about somebody that's not going to get our accreditation taken away from us.
It's not, and I think my interpretation, the point of understanding is that, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Dan, that a piece of paper does not better qualify someone to teach a class. What is behind the piece of paper? I would argue in the same, in the same argument, that there are some phenomenal diesel mechanics, there are some phenomenal physicians who are great at their job, who are horrible teachers and have no business educating. And the purpose of getting the piece of paper on the wall is to hopefully then obtain the abilities and the skill set to become a good educator, which is what we are hiring. It is what our expectation is, and is what HLC is expecting of us, is to hire educators to provide a degree. That's what I feel the purpose of the, of the HLC stance is. That's what our purpose in supporting. We know we have great faculty here. We want to support that great faculty to continue to be that great faculty and to provide a even stronger education to our students, which is our mission, which is our goal. And that's the purpose, in my mind, of what that piece of paper is for, what HLC's requirements are, and what the statements or policy here that we're talking about is proposing, which follows HLC's recommendations.
Terry.
President, like in the mechanics or whatever, is there an option for a student to just to get a certificate? Or do, or is, do we roll it into a associate's degree?
And I've had those discussions with, with our staff. You know, if it was just a certificate, it'd be a different story. But they want those students to go further. They want those students to, I mean, it's interesting that we're arguing about education. Here we're all educators. But I, but it's just like your law degree. You had to go take the bar. Had to go take the bar, or you would not have been a lawyer. Or, and same thing with each one of ours, each one, we all had to take tests, I think we all had to take tests, to be where we are today. And so I just, I just look forward to our, our faculty and whomever to be educated and be able to go on and do things like that. And it's, it helps our institution out. I mean, we're trying to better our institution, not bring it down.
Right. Well.
The only concern I have is if we can't find a person, you know, then we're, then we've hurt everybody.
I was concerned, too, and Jane and Ryan and others have done an absolutely wonderful job finding, finding educators. And I think we can. I think we're a good school. I think we're a very good school. And I'm very proud of what we're bringing into, to, the people that we bring here are, as far as faculty and staff and administration, I think are doing a very, very good job. I believe in education. I'm in a fifth gen, I'm in a, I'm a fifth generation teachers kid. My mom and dad were teachers. My grandmother and grandfather were teachers. And so I love what we do.
You know, I'd like to, I'd like to pick up on Jeremy's point, is you're right, we do have good teachers here. But HLC is saying, you need to raise your bar. And that's what we need to do. We need to raise the bar. And those that don't meet that bar, then I want to support and help them get to that level any way we can.
Right, there's the point. They either agree to do it, or we don't want it.
Well, we can't be criticized by HLC. They'll come back and review us, and we have to meet our minimum qualifications. So we like, just like the budget, and we're going to look at it in December and make sure that we're going the line. Then HLC's, we're going to come back and review us and see if we're meeting those standards.
Well, I'm sorry, I just, having a sabbatical available would be a tremendous.
Me, too.
Yes.
I thought that was a great idea. I think, I think it is. But you know, I, I look at this school and I see, you know, I went to the awards banquet or whatever it was, the leadership where people were recognized, you know, ex-educators here, you know, people like, you know, Professor Magg and other people like that. And that's the level I want to see us to continue and be like. I want us to strive continually to get those kind of educators that 20 years from now, somebody says, I had that person. I just had a friend of mine that passed away out of my last institution. He was on the roof and died, Dr., and he was just a very, very good man, Dr. Heller. And Dr. Heller, in the funeral, was, people were talking about what a great educator he was. And he was a good man, but he was a good educator. And so that's what we're all about. I want to, we want to educate our next generation.
We want to be above average.
I understand your viewpoints, but I am a big, I am a big enthusiast of written policy. And I will never understand why HLC would write the policy in this manner and then not, and then come out here and not support their own policy. It doesn't make any sense to me.
How would you change what they wrote?
If, if, if we were going to follow their policy as, as you folks want it, that last part, and/or combination of education, training, and tested experience should be taken out. It should just say, it should just stop at a bachelor's degree in the field. And it shouldn't say shall. Faculty, teaching, and career, technical education, college-level certificate, certificate, and occupational associate's degree programs should or shall hold a bachelor's degree in the field. But HLC doesn't do that. They have a written policy that they say we should follow. And it says, should and/or a combination of education, training, and tested experience. Why don't, can't they follow their own policy? And why are, why are they saying we need to follow something different than their policy? Why are they saying to this community college, we've written the policy for you, but we have a suggestion for you. You don't have to follow the policy. We expect something different from you than, than our policy.
We can one-up them.
We can one-up them?
Mm-hmm. Are you suggesting that we change that, then?
No. I'm suggesting we hold to the policy as written.
As it's written in our negotiated agreement?
As it's written here from HLC. We seem to be feeling a threat from HLC. I don't see why you wouldn't just follow their policy. Why is it a threat? We followed your policy to the T.
Because I think we'd also like to be true to our negotiated agreement, which, which says that if we hire faculty who don't have the appropriate degree, they will be asked to earn that degree. And for academic faculty, that's a master's. And for workforce faculty, that's a bachelor's.
Does anybody have any history on, on that? I mean, it seems like for years, we, if that's, you know, the agreement has been in order, right?
Do you have it?
I mean, is there any history about?
Like many things.
As far as I know, I've been here for 15 years, and that's been the policy since 2003, 15.
Have we ever required cosmetologists to go get their master's degree in diesel mechanics and mechanics?
To that, I have to say, I've been in this position since March.
Okay. There is a motion and a second on the floor?
Well, I have one more comment. If we haven't followed our own negotiated agreement, then past practice comes in very strong here. We have not required it. We have not insisted on it for years. And past practice is huge in negotiations and in contracts.
But HLC made it clear that they weren't heavy with their past practice, though. I mean, that's the whole reason we're discussing this. So I think that was already, that's kind of already been answered.
Yeah, that's kind of a neat point there.
Thank you.
And I have concerns, too, and not to belabor this further, but, you know, we have cooperative, what's the proper term for our high school students taking classes here?
Concurrent.
Concurrent enrollment classes, thank you. And the mandatory requirements of a high school educator compared to our mandatory requirements, and if we fall behind those, we may be having people teaching here that aren't actually qualified to be teaching high school classes, which is going to make things more difficult. As we clearly discussed earlier, we receive some funding for that. I think it's very, just on a mission standpoint, it is very important to our community that we're able to concurrently enroll those students, and we should do more of it, I think. And so putting ourselves in any jeopardy, possibly having instruction that can't be concurrently being, needing qualifications at the high school level, is a real disservice to our community, too. That's it, huh?
All right.
As an institution, I apologize for us hiring people that were not qualified. I'm sorry.
But.
You are here.
But that's why, that's why we just need to raise the bar. And so, but, you know, I don't want to be redundant, so.
And this means what HLC and Scott and everyone believes will help us.
Yes. Yes.
Well, I have a strong belief that being qualified is a whole different thing than having a, a degree hanging on the wall. I think being qualified is something completely different than having a degree.
Unfortunately, HLC doesn't agree with you on that. So, but that's what we have to abide by, is them, because they could do us serious damage.
Their written policy does agree with them.
So, so there's a motion on the floor, ready to take a vote? All those in favor of the motion as presented, or the policy as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Two? Okay. Any abstaining? Okay. All right. So, item C, the No Red Ink Court Master Services Agreement. So, Jane, you have the floor again.
Yes, sir. This is to respectfully request that the Board of Trustees authorize our Director of Educational Technology to renew our No Red Ink license of $9,000. Mike Webster is our educational technology director, and he also has family obligations this week. And so I'm presenting this to you. Dean Osmus spoke quite eloquently about some of the contributions that our Title V grant has made to our campus, and No Red Ink is one of those discoveries. It was funded originally through Title V, I think, for two years, is that correct? And so now it's our opportunity to pick up the cost of this license. And No Red Ink is, is an online web-based language learning software program, and it's used primarily in our English classes, our developmental English classes, and also in our English as a second language level classes. It does provide the students an opportunity to get immediate feedback on their learning, grammar particularly. There are also some writing components that are connected with this particular software program.
Okay. Any questions for Jane? And, and they just stepped out, but we asked her the other day, these numbers are in, in the budget. So, they're there.
I would move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Second discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Jane, continue on, please.
Yes, sir. This is a, the other document here. This is to respectfully ask the Board of Trustees to approve the cost of the renewal of our Canvas contract. Canvas is our online learning environment through which we deliver our online courses, specifically, and the majority of which are to our service area in our outreach program. I think that we're still waiting some new language on this contract, Glenn, an approval on your part, some new language?
No, I think that we, I have looked at it. I think it's.
So we're all good with that?
The concern was, initial concern was Dr. Holda, that the price had gone up.
Okay. As it does.
Yeah.
That's just kind of, it's tied to our FTE.
Right.
So the learning management system, when I say delivers our courses, we call them course shells, and so they're designed by the faculty primarily who are teaching them with the approval of our online director, currently Scott Cersei, and, and working with Mike Webster to deliver those. And so on the course shell are the assignments, the outcomes. Students can submit their assignments through the shell from a distance. Of course, it's online, so that the faculty then can respond appropriately.
And our online is going up, I'm trying to remember those numbers. Is it like 135% or something crazy like that?
Something like that, yeah, it's quite.
So our online is going very, very well.
And so you could probably tell us a little bit more about the number of online classes we have to.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's okay, because I, actually, I'm glad you did, because I'd like to say that with the changes in HLC qualifications, we've lost several of our instructors in the, in the outreach. And we do have some on plans, going to obtain the, the master's degree. They are teaching moving forward. But after the change with the credentialing mandate, we just had several that just didn't, you know, just didn't want to go back for a variety of different, different reasons. So with the implementation of the online platform, the online courses, that really allowed us to fill that, that void and meet that need, and actually, you know, in a larger way than we were able to actually do previously. And I have just been, you know, Dr. John and I went out on several different visits last year. And I was, I had heard on the previous occasions, prior to implementation of the, of the online, that, you know, face-to-face, face-to-face, which is absolutely understandable, they just didn't think that the online was going to meet their need. A year later, we couldn't be without it. I mean, we just couldn't be without it in the, in the outreach. We have our faculty overseeing those classes. We have coordinators within those schools helping with, with the, with the instruction and the guidance of those, of that coursework. And so it, it has become a tool that's just invaluable to what we're doing in outreach and meeting them. Because, you know, we're spread out, 14 high schools in nine different counties, as far away as Coldwater to ransom, and of course, the Buckland, similar on the local. But, yeah, it's been an invaluable resource to us. And so I'm extremely appreciative of all the work that's been done on that, on the platform, faculty that's involved in that initiative, offering courses through that platform. It's been a great resource for us and allowed us to meet needs that we wouldn't be able to meet at this point due to the HLC qualifications regulations, so.
Canvas also seems to be kind of top of industry, industry standards. If you look at other schools that are offering online programs, very often they're, they're using the Canvas platform.
And kids are technologically advanced now. I don't know, I haven't met, I think I've seen three-year-olds now with phones. iPhones, so, you know.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Holda? Motion to approve?
I move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Next up, Piedemi, 2018-19 athletic club, athletic slash out club sports insurance bid.
Thank you, Chairman Harzberger. Come to you tonight with the background of our athletic insurance bid. I know it does read club sports in there. However, I think it is more properly termed at this point athletic, since we have brought rodeo and cheer under athletics as well. So I think the, the term athletic insurance would actually cover the, the whole gamut of what we're looking at here. looking at here. To give you a little bit of background, Disinger Reed is an insurance company that we've worked with for a number of years, and they are the servicer, they're not the actual provider, the underwriter of the insurance, they're the servicer, so they go out and actually find us bids on our athletic insurance, and you can see there on page two that we had four bids come back in from Disinger Reed with Berkeley Life and Health Insurance Company being the lowest of those bids at $98,969. To give you a little bit of a background with it, our athletic insurance has actually, this is a secondary policy, I think that's one thing to understand first, this is a secondary policy, so anything that, with a $500 deductible, so anything that a student athlete has an injury, it will first go bill to their primary insurance, and this will pick up after their primary. Along with the regular coverage, we do have a $25,000 catastrophic injury, and that is $25,000 per claim, not necessarily per student athlete, it's for injury. With that, they will, and a lot of people kind of scoff at that, but any major injury anymore in athletics will surpass that $25,000 very quickly. We have been able to actually keep our premiums fairly affordable, and if, when you compare them to other schools in our conference, and I credit a lot of that to Brian Harvey and our athletic training staff, they do a lot of work in-house to try to make sure that we're treating injuries in-house, that we can treat in-house, and not just automatically sending an injury out to a doctor when sometimes it can be handled in-house. Obviously, we have some medical providers that are very good partners with us as well, with Family Practice Associates, Dr. Trotter comes up and spends some time in the athletic training room, Dr. Pick helps us out as well, and then Dr. Neal with our orthopedic care. So, I think it's a combination of what, the work that Brian does in the athletic training room, as well as those partnerships that Brian has developed with local health providers that have really helped keep our insurance down. To kind of give you a comparison, a, an institution with very similar sport offerings to us has a policy that is over double what we, what this is, so I feel very good about where we are. This is a 2.9% increase over where we were a year ago. This actually takes us back to about where we were, what, about four years ago, is that correct, Brian?
I don't know.
I think, three years ago? Okay, three or four years ago, actually, we were actually decreasing, but we have had a few more claims here in the last couple of years, which has led to that 2.9% increase. So what I'm...
And then Jacob, you added rodeo and cheerleading to this too?
Well, they've always been covered, they've always been covered under this policy, it's just the terminology now would change since they are under athletics, they've always been covered on this policy. And one thing to note with rodeo is, every rodeo student athlete is required to carry National Intercollegiate Rodeo Association Athletic Insurance as well, that's part of their dues. So, we're really, for rodeo, we're really kind of a tertiary, that third policy, if they have a primary, and then the NIRA would kick in the second, and then ours would actually be the third with that, so...
Can we get cheerleaders to do the same? Just kidding.
So, I'm respectfully requesting that you approve the 2018-19 premium for our athletic insurance from Disinger Reed, Berkeley Life and Health Insurance Company, in the amount of $98,969 for our basic and catastrophic insurance cover, insurance coverage with a $500 deductible, and it would be a two-year benefit period for our student athletes.
Right, thank you, Jacob. Any questions for Jacob?
Yeah, Jacob, I have a question. This doesn't deal with, this policy doesn't deal at all with the college's liability, right?
Correct.
So if one of our trainers misses something, are we covered with that by any type of malpractice?
It probably, it'd fall under your errors and omission. Errors and omission.
So you think we have that?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Brian, do you guys cover, have any insurance through NATA with that?
We do have a small policy.
Right.
That will cover liabilities, cover...
Each of our athletics trainers are members of the National Athletic Trainers Association as well.
And they carry a policy.
Yes, and it's not huge, but they do have... Other questions?
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? Still move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. We'll move on to item F, that would be in your handouts, that would be in the MOU of the Cavalier Sound System, so, Jacob, you have the floor still?
This item is actually, we're not asking for any financial considerations with this item, and I think Council Curbs can probably speak to this as well. This is a, an agreement, a memorandum of understanding with the City of Dodge City and the Dodge City Athletics Baseball Organization. What has happened is the city and the Athletics have purchased a new sound system for Cavalier Field, the Athletics pitching in $3,000, and this, and the city pitching in the remainder, which I believe was about $5,400 of the, of the price. The only, as you look at it, the current considerations is because it is a sound part of Cavalier Field, and we have a current agreement in place with the city for use of Cavalier Field as part of our, as part of our city usage agreement, we would have uses of this sound system as well. We are not, they're not asking us to pay for anything, the only thing that they're asking is that if it is damaged through negligent use by our staff, that we would pay for repairs. So that's the only financial consideration that, that we're dealing with. So I'm respectfully asking that you approve this memorandum of understanding with the city and the Dodge City A's.
I move, Mr. Chairman.
Second? Chairman? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. All right, we don't believe we have any unfinished business to pick up, and we'll go on to new business, have a couple items here that Trustee Malone would like to discuss, so, I may develop policies concerning the acceptance of gifts to the college.
Yeah, I'll make this brief, because we have some other things to do, but these are issues that I think that the board needs to talk about, get educated about, and perhaps take action, and probably best be done in a work session, but what brought this about, about acceptance of gifts, because I think Dr. Nolte had indicated that some donor had given the college $120,000, but for men's scholarships and basketball only, and that can create some unintended consequences with Title IX. I've done some research, and it appears that all major universities and almost every other university does have policies on whether a gift should be accepted, because sometimes they come with conditions that may not fit Title IX or other things, like there, you know, some people try to give scholarships to, you know, whites only, or whatever, or you have to be certain age, and so many of those have to be turned down for reasons of policy. And so, I think that's something that we need to discuss as to, because we don't have a policy about whether to accept gifts, and to make sure that they do fit into our mission and things. So that's all I have to actually say about that, hopefully that we'll get that.
Questions? I think there's a difference in whether a gift is addressed to the college or the foundation, is that a discussable item?
There is a big difference, and the foundation does have a gift policy, you know, in terms of what, how they evaluate gifts, and whether they accept gifts or not. And I think the idea has been since the establishment of the foundation to try to, try to move the gift to the foundation, as opposed to it coming directly to the college and the public funds issue. But, Chris, you can speak more about that probably than I can, but there is a policy with the, the foundation does have such a policy.
We knew that, so, how often is there a gift addressed just to the college?
I don't know, I mean, you know, the, my daughter-in-law worked for the K-State Foundation, and they spent a lot of time explaining to donors why they couldn't accept that particular scholarship, the way it was framed. I just, you know, noticed that we didn't have anything.
And most colleges do have, and because, I think, Maya, you were on a private, a private college, and I too was, and, I mean, you can get gifts that really just never stop giving in a bad way, and so, because of the obligation that they might create for you and all kinds of things, so I, I would say the gift policy is an excellent idea to have in place.
But that's for the college?
For the college.
And the foundations is their own, and they have their own policy, and we have two representatives from the Board of Trustees on the foundations board to make sure that there's continuity and alignment with our direction at the college. So, so good clarification there on all parts, thank you. Okay?
And the second one is to discuss whether we should restrict athletic scholarships to tuition and books, it has been a long tradition in the J-Ha Conference, but as I understand it, President Nolte, that it's been wiped away in the last year or not?
You know, they, they still, this institution, and Jake can help me a little bit, but my understanding is, this institution is tuition and books, and that's it.
Okay, but how about the conference?
Is that, the conference rules, because you and I had a conversation today a little bit about that.
There's guidelines from the conference on that, but it could be different now.
The conference, and I asked for an exact date when we, Vice President Teymon and I had this discussion actually about 4:30 today, and I asked for an exact date that this was voted on in the conference, I did not get that before I, before I got here, I did not get any response from our commissioner before I got to the meeting. However, as I recall, in the early spring of 2017, the conference had a special meeting, we normally have a fall meeting, a spring meeting, they had a special meeting in early 2017, and the conference took major action on, and this was a vote of the presidents of the conference, took major action on two different issues. One, they eliminated the out-of-state limitations on football, men's basketball, and women's basketball, which had always been in place, however, not in place for any other sport, strictly for those three sports.
You talked about the number.
Yes, the number of allowable student athletes on the squad, and not, not just on scholarship, on this, on, actually on the squad. And then the second item, the second major action item that they took, that they took action on was to eliminate the conference restrictions on scholarships, and put us on the same level with the rest of the NJCA, which allows for, if the, if the school so chooses, allows for full scholarships given to include books, tuition, fees, room, board, and $250 a semester in class-related supplies, and that's, there's, that's a tough one, because it's, it's, there's some interpretation piece out there, is a notebook a class-related supply, or does it have to be something that is actually required for the class? For example, we require, for some of our math classes, we require an access code for an online section of it, that's not necessarily a book, but we consider it, I mean, that it is part of that, so that's one of the things. So that's what's allowable by the NJCA standards, does not mean that that's what every institution is giving.
And they're all doing some, some of doing different things?
And, and I do think this is a discussion that probably needs to be had in a work session, as Dr. Nolte and I talked about earlier today, we probably need to have this discussion in a work session about how we are structuring and, and the effects that it is going to have on our institution.
Because some schools are looking at taking the money they're given by, the total amount that they're giving as far as tuition and books, taking that total amount and giving full scholarships with that money?
A number of schools have already gone to that model this year for the 18-19 year, because this is the first year, when they voted in 17, they voted it in place for implementation in 18 and 19, not in 17 and 18. The elimination of the roster, the number of out-of-staters was in place, was put in place for 17, 18, but the scholarship piece was not put in place until 18, 19.
So just as clarification, Dr. Nolte, so I understand this right, so you're saying they would take, say they, they gave $100,000 a year arbitrarily, and so, so they took that $100,000, and then instead of giving it to 150 athletes, they just give it to 50 of them, give them full everything? So they're scholarshipsing less athletes on football, right?
What has happened, and I can speak, because I know direct knowledge of one program at another institution, the institution gave them, the amount of money, gave them a pool of money that was equal to the number, equal to, in this case, it's basketball, equal to the number that it would cost for 15 books and tuition scholarships. They said, here is that amount of money, you can split it up among your kids, your student athletes, however you want, but we still want 15 on your roster. So if you can split that among 10 and go find five walk-ons, we're okay with that. But they gave them that freedom within their program to do that.
It's like if you have a really good quarterback and a really good running back, and a good defensive back, they can be on full scholarship.
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Our defensive end. So that's, yeah, it's...
Welcome.
And finally, the one I think we should discuss is trying to get our college to a point where it can allow all Ford County residents to attend their community college without paying any tuition fees or any books. And, and my, looking at this, when I, when we realize that Dodge City Community College is funded essentially solely by the Ford County taxpayers, that just like we do in high school, or K through 12, we don't expect any of our residents to pay tuition and fees to attend K through 12. I think we should strive to do that, I think we can do it, I think it would be to educate everyone in our community, and I would expect it a, that we educate everybody that isn't leaving for another four-year university, and that should be our goal, whether it be in vocational or academic, because I think that's really what the promise of community colleges, where Ford County residents have taken on a tremendous burden. 87 other counties didn't do that, and now are actually taking advantage of our residents to pay for educations of not only out-of-staters, but also in-staters that don't have community colleges and don't contribute to them. So I think we should concentrate more on our students, and I think this would be something that the entire state community colleges should look at in requesting and actually requiring the non-community college residents to pay their own way if they want to come to our college, just the way they would pay their own way if they wanted to come to our high school. high school. I can't imagine the Dodd City High School people or the Spearville people being too happy about educating people from out-of-state or out-of-county if they were not getting reimbursed for it. So I think we need to look at it. Hundred years ago, a high school education was fine. We're in the 21st century. Everybody should have a two-year degree and we, and it ought to be offered to them just like a K through 12 degree is.
To clarify, Terry, K-12, you do pay?
You don't pay any tuition.
Yeah, there is a charge for K-12s.
Well, it's not tuition.
No, but, but there is a charge.
Well, there's a charge, how much is it?
But, but parents, if they have a Spearville child or Dodd City has a child and wants to go to Spearville, the state funding follows that child to that school. So there is a, they do get money when a child transfers from one district to another.
That's what he's saying though. But if, if a parent can't afford to pay in 443, they don't pay. They don't have to pay.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's a minimal amount.
If they can't afford to pay, they don't have to pay. Can't keep a kid from going to school just because the parents can't pay.
The Constitution.
Pay school fees.
The state of Kansas makes sure that a child could go to school.
You don't have to pay school fees for a school, public school.
Well, that would work if we had K-14 program, but we don't.
Well, we have, I know, we're on our, we are on our own and that's why we should take care of our own because it is limited to Ford County for the most part and it is truly a burden for Ford County to be educating people from Wichita and wherever else in Florida when they do not get much of any help for that.
Terry, can you, do you have a number of what Ford County residents bring into college? Do we know? Seems like maybe you've given them to us before.
You mean as far as tuition and, yes. I can't right off the top of my head, but I can give that to you. I know that fees from Ford County is probably around 600,000 in fees from Ford County.
But we also give a lot of scholarships to.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to say.
We give a lot of scholarships.
I'm talking just about fees, but.
Just briefly?
Most of them.
Sorry. Yesterday in the work session, Fort Worth County, you asked about how many Ford County scholarships we give. So this fall, we have 353 full-time Ford County students attending right now.
Oh, drop the mic.
So 353 full-time Ford County residents are attending Dodd City right now or will be in the fall. And of those, 207 of them, which is 59%, will be receiving the tuition and books scholarship. And of the 207, 75 of those will get the additional $500 for their academic 3.5 GPA or above.
Does it also take care of their fees?
The $500, the extra $500 will take care of fees, but it's not just the Ford County scholarship.
So it probably wouldn't cost us a whole lot more to have a Ford County scholarship that took care of tuition fees and books. It would cost a lot more than.
It would cost you about 500,000.
You're forgetting about the state aid that they would bring the additional students.
I agree with Terry, they should be coming for free. I think we're going to have to look at some numbers, but it's, it's logical that Ford County residents who are paying all the fees at this college to keep a flow through their taxes shouldn't come here for free. They should come for free. They're already paying for it. Shouldn't have to pay for it again when they walk in the door.
As long as it doesn't increase their tax burden.
I think it'd lessen the tax burden, actually.
I think we should, I think we should take a serious look at it as far as see if it can be done. Is anybody in the state doing it? Terry, do you know?
No.
Nobody in the state's doing it? Is anybody, is anybody doing it in up states?
California has one or two that have tried it.
They've tried it.
They've tried it.
Well, there's, there's so many, there's not very many community colleges funded like the state of Kansas funds. They're fairly, fairly unique in that a lot of, a lot of them are funded by region institutions. They don't get any money from local taxpayers, they get it all from the state. So there's so many different varieties. But here, when we, the only people who pay for this in reality are the Ford County taxpayers.
Is this, is this a statewide issue that we could discuss with other community colleges? I know Butler County is having.
Say to me.
They're feeling that they're over, the taxpayers overburdened because of all the Cedric County students.
Yeah, but the, but the new formulation is going to help ease that burden because two-thirds of that tuition at 183 will come from the state.
So that's a way that they're trying to accomplish or ease that burden from out-of-district students
coming in. So, so for revenue coming into the college, we will get more revenue coming in from the college from the state from out-of-district students than in-district students.
The irony, Gary, of that, of the Butler County thing is that Cedric County is the one who's responsible for doing away with out-of-district tuition.
Really?
And because they got tired of spending a couple million dollars centered over Butler County and they wanted the Wichita Tech Center. So that's, that's, they're the ones that did it and then they're still sending 60, what, percent of the Butler County students over to them?
62%.
And not paying very much.
Well, should we restructure our fees so that we charge out-of-county residents and out-of-state residents?
Oh, we do charge.
We do charge more.
Even more. I know we charge more, even more. So we reduce the burden on in-county students.
Well, that's where the, if the 19 community colleges got together, the other 87 counties have been, let's say, using us for many, many years and also chuckling at us about the fact that we will educate their people for virtually nothing. And what the community colleges should get together and say is that just like Colorado does or Texas does or Oklahoma does, if you're an out-of-stater, you're not going to get by with paying $120, you're going to be paying somewhere between $300 and $400 for an education. We talk about a good education, it's worth that education, yes it is. I want to make it better, but we're being taken advantage of all of us.
And we can look at that.
Let's take a look into it and see.
It'd be interesting.
I like Maya's idea about meeting with the other colleges. I want my meeting.
Yes.
You can ask for that discussion in the state meeting.
Okay. Let's, let's take a quick, five, 10 minute break. We've got one more item to take care of before we move to consent. So let's try to be back going here, how long, how long you need? Five minutes? Five minutes.
When I grow up, I want to save lives like a superhero and show up when people needed me.
When I grow up, I want to be a police officer and I want to protect people too.
No matter what it is you want to achieve in the future, your journey starts here.
When I grow up, when I grow up, when I grow up.
I don't know what I want to do when I grow up, but I know I want to go to college.
Dodge City Community College, adventure awaits.
All right, we're back in session. We had one item moved from the consent agenda, so Dan?
I just had some questions. And it looks to me like going through the financials here that we've had about 40, almost $44,000 worth of helicopter program expenses, not, not counting those that went to the VA, but just room rent and other expenses that we had. Attorney's expenses, about $33,000. So I'm just, I'm just wondering out loud to all of us, is this a program that's really worth keeping, putting money into month after month after month? And not only, not only these expenses, but also adjunct professors, teachers, you know, vice president, the provost, salary and expenses? Isn't a program really worth keeping?
I guess my answer to that is we don't know yet.
Well, I know we're losing money on it now. How much are we losing?
What was the last? It was like 97,000, I should have thought carefully. 97,000?
The last fiscal year.
The last fiscal year.
And we're losing more now during this fiscal year or going to, it looks like, correct?
I, I think Dan has a good question. I think it's something we need to, to discuss and think about.
Well, I think there's going to be some additional information coming later that will, will, will fit into this discussion.
That, that's my thought.
And one other thing, all these expenses for athletic tech supplies, hoodies and stuff like that, is that bookstore stuff, no? It's for the athletic department? Okay. Some of that stuff's pretty expensive. I'm not talking about football helmet, I'm talking about even hoodies and stuff. Okay, that's all I had.
But they are getting bids on that stuff, correct?
Quotes.
Quotes, that's what I meant, quotes. Yes. Okay.
I have, I, at some point, and I maybe need to write this up, but Dan brought it up and since we're looking at money and cuts, I'm going to a national conference. And usually on a committee like this, you have a rotation. So that if I go this year, then I don't go the next year or the next year and the new one comes on. And I haven't found any place here that says that we have a, a rotation like that. I don't, I don't think that all of us need to go to a national conference every single year and cause that. If we're trying to save some money, then let's cut here too.
Absolutely.
Trustee, take your turn.
I thought you said that you thought that education was important.
It, it is, but I think as, I think that if you rotate and not go like every year or all of us that want to go, go, I think there should be a limit, maybe two go to this conference and this, and then they bring back and they end service and teach the others what they have learned. That's what administration, at least, that I've been used to dealing with.
Well, our statutes say that it's the duty of the trustees to stay informed and be educated. And I, there again, I, I find it kind of interesting that the people that we would want at least educated about how to operate or manage a community college is to be the trustees.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but I think our in-state conferences are just as beneficial.
You're wrong.
And they're last, last, not as costly.
You're wrong about the, just as good. And yeah, they may not be as costly, but the, I don't know, did you take a course in trustee management in college?
No, but I think as a new trustee, I think a new trustee should have a benefit to go at least once and then every three years or every two years. But I think we need to look at a rotation schedule.
Well, my point is that none of us took a course in trusteeship. So it's an ongoing education and the more you go and learn, the better the board member, I think you will be. So I, I disagree with you totally. And basically a statute says that if trustee incurs expenses, they are to be paid if it's part of carrying out their duties. And I think that's probably the most important thing to carry out is your duty to be educated in, in operating a $26 million operation.
I, I agree completely, but I don't think we have to go every year to have that opportunity.
And you don't.
I, I just think that we need to have some, I think we should have some kind of rotation in the calendar.
I agree.
I know what Kathy's saying.
I agree. I think we should have some guidance and, you know, the board decide how we do that. And I think especially in this issue where money is important, I don't think we ought to be sending every trustee to Maui, for instance. That would not be the right thing to do. And we can get our education a lot of different places. So I think we should develop a board plan, like you say, to, you know, rotate that or, or like new trustees can get involved and have, have some sort of approach to some guidelines into that or decisions amongst the board, who's, who's going to go.
And Terry, we get the magazines that are full of information and trustee information. I, I know I get mine on the internet and various places. So I think we do have the ability to stay informed and learn.
Well, like I say, you've never attended one of them, right?
No, but I've attended a lot of professional education conferences and I do take away a lot each time. But I think that I would be remiss in using taxpayers' money to go someplace every year when I can benefit one year and Jeremy the next year and maybe Maya, you know, if we take turns and then bring back our information.
Well, you must be better at articulating what you've learned than some people are.
I definitely agree with that because I've been on the board for however many years that thing says now. And of the, of the people who have gone, and so I think as this policy is discussed, I think it should be something we discuss, I haven't yet seen a report back or any education presented by anybody that's been to any of those conferences, so I haven't gleaned anything from them, having not been able to go because of my work duties and other things that I have. So I think whatever we've established and whatever, if it isn't in our current statute slash policy, it, it needs to be in there, that there should be the expectation, every other board that I'm on has a full expectation clearly stated that if the board is paying for anything, and the taxpayers, I'm sure would request this or would agree, but that when you come back from it, you're providing that same education back to, to the body. So then there's some return on investment. So, I mean, that's a simple ask. I mean, you know, a report, I'm not asking for, you know, a two-hour lecture or PowerPoint, but, you know, a report at least, I think if, if it's not in our policy, it needs to be in our policies.
And if it's in Maui, I don't think any of you ought to go either.
Without you?
I mean, I should go.
None of you should go. We'll stipulate that.
By the way, I used my own money to go to Maui.
Okay, well, I think we'll get a process going to develop some sort of guideline or policy into this and go that route. Okay. Thanks for bringing that up.
This chairman might even consider a monetary, excuse me, sharing of the person who goes.
Elaborate?
That the person put in part of that expense under.
No, I don't think so.
Well, we need to talk about that because there can be abuses.
Could be abuses, but that's why we're having a policy to rotate and have, have those guidelines.
So we can develop a policy.
If the board thinks this person should go to that event for training, then that's, that's, that's a duty of the board.
A lot of things to talk about.
There are a lot of things to talk about. We'll, we'll work on that. So with that, we've removed that item from consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda as presented?
Yes.
Yes.
So moved. Second?
Second.
All right, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, we need to move into executive session.
Do we need to approve that because that was removed from the consent agenda? Do we need to have an action on that?
Removed.
Because the action, business services 1A was removed, so we need to.
That was just discussion.
No, yeah, I didn't ask for any action on it.
No, that was not.
I just asked.
He needed some questions answered, so we pulled that out to be able to discuss. And so that was not, yeah, that was for discussion, so he got his questions answered, and so we removed, we approved the consent agenda with those.
With that standing.
With that, additional information on that item. Okay, so we're here to approve the consent agenda. And I had a motion from Maya, did I have a second? From, oh, Jeremy? Okay, discussion further? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, okay. We will go on to executive session A, and so Attorney Curbs?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss a professional growth contract pursuant to personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B1. The open meeting to resume in this location at 8:50 PM. In addition to the trustees, the college attorney, the president, and vice president of order should be included in the executive session.
Okay, do I have a motion? Second? Second? All right, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, we are now in executive session till 8:50. Okay, we are back in session and no action was taken, which we will now lead to item B, and Mr. Curbs will.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend, Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss an employee contract pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B1. The open meeting to resume in this location at 9:03 PM. In addition to the trustees, the college attorney, the president, athletic director Ripple, and vice president Tamon should be included in the executive session.
Okay, do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, we are now in executive session. Okay, we are now back in regular session and no action was taking, taken, so we do need to go into another executive session, item C, so Attorney Curbs?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss an employee contract pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B1. The open meeting to resume in this location at 9:20 PM. In addition to the trustees, the college attorney, and the president should be included in the executive session.
Do I have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, we are now in executive session. Okay, we are back in session and no action was taken, which moves us to the last executive session to consult with board and attorney-client privilege concerning privilege matters. I botched that, but so what, I'm, do I have a motion?
I will make a motion.
I make the recommendation.
No, that's right, you're right. I didn't make the recommendation.
I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss legal matters related to the flight program pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting to resume in this location at 9:40 PM. In addition to the trustees, the college attorney, the president, and provost judge should be included in the executive session.
Okay, you're in motion, do I have a?
I may.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, we are now in executive session. We are now back in regular session and there was no action taken, so with that, there's nothing further on our agenda, and meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
When I grow up, I want to save lives like a superhero and show up when people need me.
When I grow up, I want to be a police officer, and I want to protect people, too.
No matter what it is you want to achieve in the future, your journey starts here.
When I grow up, when I grow up, when I grow up, I don't know what I want to do when I grow up, but I know I want to go to college.
Dodge City Community College, adventure awaits.